We are, Tony, do we need to take the roll? Let's go ahead and do it.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
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 Here. Great, thank you, welcome to everyone who's joining us. We're on to item 10.3 and we have a brief staff presentation.
Division Manager for Development Review and David Keon, our Principal Planner for Environmental Review. And the project before you, item 10.3 is the Kaiser Permanente Hospital Project. We have, one second. Not that one. So the project includes, I'll just get going. Project includes a planned development rezoning for the 39.2 acre site to APD Planned Development Zoning District, a planned development permit to allow the demolition of the existing 250,000 square foot hospital, including the removal of 59 trees, 32 of which are ordinance, and then the construction of a 303-bed, six-story, approximately 685,000 square foot hospital, including basement, with associated uses. And then in addition, there is a site development permit that will allow for temporary construction activities on an adjacent site that you'll see, just one second. So here's the project location, you can see the areas being rezoned and the areas for the planned development permit. The additional site for temporary construction activities is the yellow box on the upper right-hand corner. So the site is designated PQP and Neighborhood Community Commercial for the Kaiser campus. The temporary site is IP Industrial Park. It has an existing planned development zoning that obviously we're updating through this action. There will be no change on the temporary use site. So the project was reviewed for consistency against the 2040 general plan, all of the applicable city council policies, the municipal code for tree removals and zoning standards, and then the proposed PD zoning development standards, as well as our citywide design guidelines, and of course, CEQA. For public outreach, a joint community and environmental scoping meeting was held on June 5th. Development signs were posted on and around the sites and notices were sent to properties within 1,000 feet of this location. For environmental review, an environmental impact report was prepared for the project. The draft EIR was circulated for 45 days back in February through to April 11th. We received five public comment letters during the draft circulation. Most of those comments received were from public agencies, including Caltrans, Valley Water, PG&E, and VTA, and requested clarifications to the documents. Comments also included concerns related to transportation analysis, construction traffic, stormwater runoff protections for cultural and tribal cultural resources. Our First Amendment to the EIR was posted on the city's website on August 29th. Based on comments received, no recirculation was required at that time. Wrong way. So with that, staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution certifying the environmental impact report for the project, approving an ordinance to rezone the approximately 39-acre site to APD Planned Development rezoning, adopting a resolution approving subject to conditions the planned development permit to effectuate the zoning and to allow the demolition and construction of the new facilities on site, as well as adoption of a resolution approving subject to conditions, the associated site development permit for construction staging on the adjacent site. And with that, staff's available for questions. Oh, I will just hand it over to John, just very briefly. Staff did issue a supplemental memo relative to the Santa Teresa Library, which is next door to this site. So there's been some additional work that's been going on there.
Thank you. So John Two, Division Manager, so we did release a supplemental memo adding five conditions. Since the planning commission meeting, those conditions deal with pedestrian safety enhancement on International Circle, Community Drive, deals with capital improvements towards signage and lighting for the Santa Teresa Library. In addition to that, more additional conditions related to construction truck routes and construction noise reduction plan. In addition, a condition that talks about educating the staff at the hospital about utilizing shuttles and VTA's and parking and not utilizing nearby lots that are not rented or leased by the hospital.
Great, thank you, appreciate the staff presentation. Do we have a presentation, or I'm sorry, a comment from the applicant, or should we go to public comment? Would the applicant like to speak? Eric, I see you shaking, please. All right, the applicant will have collectively up to five minutes to present. You can come on down to the podium here. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. I'm Eric Henry, and I'm the Senior Vice President and Area Manager for the Greater San Jose. And I'm honored to be here presenting our proposal for replacement hospital. As many of you may be aware, our current facility sits in east, south, and south San Jose and has been in utilization for the past 50 years. We are serving over 200,000 individuals that reside not only in San Jose, but Gilroy, Santa Cruz, and surrounding communities. Throughout this, we have complemented a staff of over 400 physicians, 3,200 nurses, and a cadre of other clinical professionals that serve the communities that we're talking about. With that, we are excited about the plans for replacement hospital. Staff will relay to you that it cannot come faster or sooner, and more importantly, our patience in terms of the care we're able to provide in a new dynamic space. I will now turn it over to Tina Waremeister, who will go over details of our proposed plan with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think we may need to pause the clock if we don't have the present, is there a presentation? Did you have additional slides?
We did, yes.
Okay, why don't we pause the clock and make sure we've got your presentation up? Okay. Great. Looks like we're ready to go, are we on the right starting slide? Does that look right?
Mayor Mahan and city council members. As Mr. Henry mentioned, my name is Tina Waremeister. I'm happy to present some of the details of the Kaiser Permanente Hospital Replacement Project. The proposed hospital replacement will comply with state seismic standards, be right-sized to provide a new, modern, state-of-the-art hospital to provide high-quality patient services. Patient rooms will no longer need to be shared, and the bed count is increasing to serve the growing needs of the San Jose population. The project is proposing a temporary construction trailer office on an adjacent site, which will be returned to its current state at the end of the project. The planned development zoning update includes a potential addition of a 250,000-square-foot medical office building and additional parking in the future. But there are no immediate plans for this expansion, and this would be something that we would need to come back and do additional entitlements and have public noticing and participation in the future. The environmental impact report found that the project would not result in any significant and unavoidable environmental impacts with implementation of the identified mitigation measures. And Kaiser will implement an employee parking plan during construction of the new parking garage. Employees will utilize off-site parking lots with shuttle services available. The new parking garage will be completed first so that it can be utilized while the hospital construction proceeds. The project will provide wayfinding signage for the library to ensure that the public is aware that the library is open during construction, and also provide permanent wayfinding signage after the project is constructed. The weekdays farmer's market will continue, and the Saturday market will pause until the weekend parking impacts can be assessed. The hospital replacement project will be a state-of-the-art facility that features Kaiser Permanente's commitment to sustainability. The project will be one of the first all-electric hospitals in California and will reduce carbon emissions by 48%, increase energy efficiency by 40%, and reduce water consumption, saving over 7 million gallons a year. Kaiser's new hospital will achieve LEED Gold certification for its innovative and comprehensive energy savings design. The project will also provide enhanced bike lanes and sidewalks along Santa Teresa and Cottle Road and within the Medical Center Campus. And Kaiser has also paid $1.75 million in commercial linkage fees in support of the city's affordable housing initiatives. Thank you very much for your time. Kaiser's in agreement with the staff memo, the supplemental memo, and also with the memo written by Councilmember Batra as well. And we respectfully request approval of the project, thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it, and council may choose to ask you all questions, but you're welcome to have a seat until we get back to the council. Do we have public comment, Tony?
Yes, I have three cards for this item. When I call your name, please come down to the microphone. The front row is reserved for those who are waiting to speak, so you can have a seat there. Joseph Lopez, Winston Ashby, and Luis Arguelo. And you do not have to speak in that order, so that's Joseph, Winston, and Luis.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Joseph Lopez, I'm a NorCal carpenters representative, but I'm also raised, born and raised in San Jose, so I'm a San Jose native. This project is special to us because we grew up around Kaiser. I actually did my first five years going in from an apprentice to a journeyman at that Kaiser-Santa Teresa. So I've seen all the stuff that we did to keep it compliant over the years, and it's just time. It's time for a new project, it's time for a new hospital. I think San Jose deserves a new hospital, we've seen it with Santa Clara and what it did for that community, just to be the go-to hospital, go-to. But San Jose needs that. And so I'm speaking on behalf of 37,000 members in Northern California of carpenters. We've partnered with Kaiser for 80 years, and we've done nothing but union work in that facility. Other trades have also been in that building, and it's a great, it's a great place to work, a great place to have a career. Doing my apprenticeship there, it allowed me to get that home, local paycheck, where I didn't have to drive to San Francisco, I was in my backyard working. This project is going to provide that for journeymen, apprentices, foremen, careers, people are going to retire, people are going to start here. So we really appreciate your time, and we hope that you would reconsider approving this project to pass with flying colors. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Maybe too much dancing, right? Good evening, I'm Mayor Mahan, city council members, Luis Arguelo, I'm the Assistant Business Manager for Labor's Local 270. It is a pleasure to be here, as always, with behalf of every single one of you. On behalf of the 30,678 hard-working Launa members in Northern California and the 6,438 members of Launa Local 270, I am here to express our strong support for the Kaiser Permanente San Jose Medical Center project. This project represents not just an investment in healthcare, but also a significant opportunity for job creation in the local communities. Thousands of members live and work in Santa Clara, and they will directly benefit from the state-of-the-art services that this facility will provide. Kaiser Permanente has consistently prioritized union contractors, ensuring that local union laborers and skilled tradespeople are employed on their projects. This commitment is essential, as it fosters job opportunities that provide living wage positions with comprehensive benefits. Such jobs are critical in addressing the challenges our members face and enhancing the overall economic vitality of our community. Moreover, this project will facilitate recruitment and training of new apprentices, especially from underserved communities by collaborating with dedicated union contractors such as Rudolph and Sletten. Kaiser is taking meaningful steps towards building a diverse workforce rooted in equity and opportunity. We are excited about Kaiser and Rudolph and Sletten's commitment to local hiring, training initiatives, which will ensure that the benefits of this project extend far beyond its construction. We strongly, I strongly urge you to consider approving this project as it will help thousands of members, the community, and the community at large. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Winston Ashby, and I stand with Kaiser Permanente because Kaiser Permanente stood with me. I stand here before you with a tumor in my brain. And if it wasn't for the support of the staff, the nurses, and the doctors who saved my life and allowed me to breathe, I would not be standing here before you today. And so it's people like me who stand in solidarity with community members, who are communicating to you, that let our vote count to support Kaiser Permanente and their development and support of the community. And as the executive director of the party program, we will partner with Kaiser Permanente to make sure that young people at the library have access to resources, that people that need to be included in conversations about the development of projects in their community is heard. Then we have a win-win situation, thank you.
Back to council.
Great, thank you to all of our speakers, thank you, Tony. Coming back to the council, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Batra first, in whose district this project will be.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to talk about this project. Thank you for the speakers who have explained our project and for the unions who have come in support of this project. I'm equally excited about that this project is being housed in District 10, where it has served for 50 years, the residents and the residents from the nearby cities. All those members have had the quality care, the physicians had a good job there, the employees, the union, they work as a team, the employer and the employee work as a team to make this as a successful healthcare facility. Having this project the way it has been planned, it has taken the community's needs into account. It has analyzed what will be the impact during the construction, what will be the benefits after the construction. They've taken all of those things account, put together a package, working with our city staff, to minimize the inconveniences of the project and have this $2 billion-plus project to be made a reality in this area, using fully the labor, which is a union labor, which we want to have, good life with the living wages. The residents are going to benefit from it because they're going to be able to have the most modern healthcare facility. The physicians and the employees are going to have an advanced working place where they're going to be proud, and they're going to be comfortable, they're going to be safe. The economy of San Jose is going to benefit from the jobs during the construction and subsequently for many, many years, by being able to get the revenues which are generated by the employees. And we want more and more of our employees to be living locally, and this facility provides that opportunity. When this project has been planned, all those things were kept in mind. But you know, things do show up sometime at the last minute. The library, which is located to the closest building going to be to this facility, recognized that there were some needs which might have been missed or could be served better. Kaiser had no difficulty in accepting the changes which would be required to be made, to make their library a resource which it has been for the community and continue to be that. So having such a willing partner, I am proud to endorse that this project should be a goal. Our Brown Act, where we discussed the thing, even though we did not need to write a multi-signature memo, we considered all of the aspect, we are all in support of this project. So I want to make the motion to accept the recommendations in the staff memo and supplemental memo to be able to have this project be brought to reality in District 10.
Great, thank you, council member, Councilor Ramirez?
Yeah, thank you, I, first, just to start off, thank you to the union members that were here. Obviously, thank you to Kaiser and all the work that you've done in the community. Thank you specifically to Kieran Kelly, Carla Lomax, who I know we interacted with time and again. Thank you to the library department, obviously, planning and such. This is very exciting news, and to maybe say a little bit of something similar that Mr., Councilmember Batra said, is that really Kaiser really has been a pillar of the South San Jose community, it's one of the largest employers of the city. And it's really one of the few places, I think, that touches people at the beginning of their life and the end of their life. And I've experienced both with my family there at that facility, and even having family and relatives employed by Kaiser. And so certainly a very strong presence in the community. Some of the work that you all did as it relates to this project started even, I think, maybe even a year ago, a little bit more than, well, more than a year ago, I'm sure, but even brought in partners such as VTA, securing some of their spaces. And so in my mind, everything you've done has been very thoughtful, has been very thought-through as it relates to the impacts to the community, certainly impacts to the library. So we very much appreciate you agreeing to the conditions that I know we lifted up, maybe a little late, but I think important enough for you to consider and move forward, so we greatly appreciate that. Even, and something that Councilmember Batra didn't mention, but even concerns from the residents that I represent in the immediate area, such as path of travel from some of the construction vehicles, which is important to them. And so thank you so much for agreeing to do that. And even, I know I had conversations with Carla and Kieran about specifically even the path of travel for some of the shuttles that are going to be bringing in the employees. And so all in all, I think you all were very considerate about what, sort of the impacts during construction and such. And I have no doubt that as things may arise, as it relates to the library, that you're going to, because I'll be gone at the end of the year, and this is going to continue to go for a few years, but that you're going to be able to address some of those concerns, whether they come up or not. And so very excited about this, I think it's a long time coming, and I think the community in San Jose generally is going to benefit tremendously from it, so thank you for that.
Agreed, and well said, council member, thank you. And this used to be in your district, did it not? I know you're very familiar with the campus, so you and Councilmember Batra care a whole lot about this investment. Onto Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to thank staff for their hard work on this. I also want to thank Kaiser for choosing to invest in our great city with a new and updated facility. Kaiser has played a major role in my life, my brother, mother worked for Kaiser for 35 years, proud member of SEIU, UHW. I mean, she actually worked at the site here at Santa Teresa. So really, I spent many evenings, growing up, going to Kaiser, visiting her, you know, during her lunchtime and walking through the halls there in the hospital. So you know, that place is very special to me and my, my family. And I also want to elevate just the quality of jobs that Kaiser has brought here to the community. I know that both the council members have already mentioned, but it is a major employer, they do pay livable wages, and they have a union, majority of them are represented by the union. And so you know, these are some of the best jobs here in the city of San Jose. And of course, they got great benefits, great health insurance. Anytime I got sick or broke a bone, I was, I was always taken care of. So these are the type of jobs we want to keep in, in the city of San Jose, and we want more of these type of jobs. And so I'm excited, really excited about this investment. And then just by looking at the room and, you know, seeing the diverse tradesmen, I see sheet metal workers, NorCal carpenters, Launa Local 270, I think it's safe to say that this project will also be creating jobs and that those jobs are going to be families sustaining wages and union wages as well. So I support this project, I support the jobs it will create, and I'm looking forward to this vote. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, council member, and Councilman Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Kaiser for investing into our community and, you know, making less of a carbon footprint onto this environment. And I appreciate that our local union 270 and others have come out and participate. And I, again, I apologize to you Kaiser for including our local unions and allowing them to live in an expensive area with a good living wages. And again, I think it's important that we continue to support company like yourself who invest into our community, and thank you for doing so.
All right, well, I think my colleagues have said it all, I'll just add, did you have something you need to say, Nora?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah, Nora's going to add something.
I know, I apologize, Mayor. Councilmember Kamay just left the dais and asked me to just indicate that she has a, at least the potential appearance of a conflict on this matter, and so she has recused herself and gone to the back, so I apologize.
That's a good, that's a good note, thank you for that. I was just going to add, this is my hospital, I'm heading in next week for my flu shot, and I'm really excited for this upgrade. I think my colleagues highlighted all the benefits and the important role that Kaiser and this hospital in particular play in our city. So I'll just add my gratitude to you all for your service to the community and doubling down, making a big investment that's going to provide great jobs, thank you to everybody who came out today and continue to help our community stay healthy. And I really appreciate Kaiser's emphasis on prevention and getting upstream of chronic illness, which is something I know Councilman Davis has gotten us to think more about as we've talked about Blue Zones. So I think it's a great project and look forward to supporting it, I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Kamay recused.
Great, thank you all. Okay, we have one agendized item left, we are on to item 10.4, which is the Pleasant Hills Golf Course Guiding Principles. We will start with a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, just as staff gets situated, I'll just give a little context. So Chris Burton, Director of Planning and Building Code Enforcement, joined by Michelle Flores, our Supervising Planner, and Jared Ferguson, our Principal Planner, who will get into the details. But I think it's just an important note on Pleasant Hills that, you know, we've had 20 years of land use planning that has really restricted the opportunity for future development on this site, first under the Evergreen East foothills development policy, and then through the initial implementation of Policy 5-1, which, as we shifted from level of service to VMT as transportation analysis, really didn't consider development on a site like this. As a result, back in 2022, when changes were made to that policy, staff recommended to council and council approved that we bring forward a community guiding principles process. The intent being that we'd sat on this property for a long time, and it was an important moment to stop and hear from the community on what their intent for the future development in this area should be. And so I just wanted to give that context, and then I'll hand it over to the team to walk you through what we've done.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. So as mentioned, so this process is a result of multiple policy changes summarized here. So in February of 2018, council policy 5-1, transportation analysis policy replaced council policy 5-3, and this shift to transportation analysis to align with state, that shifted from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. In December of 2021, two general plan amendments were approved that retired the Evergreen East Hills development policy from the general plan. The policy had relied on analysis based on level of service, which needed to be retired to comply with Senate Bill 743, and this policy had severely restricted development within the policy area, which included the golf course. The removal of the policy created a path for new developments if they complied with the council policy. And for Pleasant Hills, due to the high levels at VMT at that time, a general plan amendment would not have been supported. In December of 2022, council approved modifications. In December of 2022, council approved modifications to creating couple paths for housing in the former policy area. And so for market rate projects, this amendment states that if a project is unable to fully mitigate the VMT impacts, there could be a statement of overriding considerations done as part of the CEQA process. And so for these overriding considerations, they're listed here below. So the overriding considerations for this policy would be being within a growth area and in the general plan designation of private recreation open space. The project will need to show that it has overriding benefits in accordance with CEQA and provide significant benefit in the form of affordable housing. So for this consideration, the project will need to demonstrate that the project will make a significant contribution towards resolving the housing crisis and further achievement of the city's below-market regional housing needs assessment goal by providing a significant number of residential units affordable to both low and moderate income households. And they would need to be integrated within the overall development fourth. It would need to provide a significant benefit in neighborhood vibrancy, which includes neighborhood serving commercial. And the applicant will need to conduct a fiscal and jobs housing impact study. And so this will be done during the review of a development permit and this would be to fully understand the impacts of the project on city's revenue and expenditures. A consultant will need to repair the report that will help the city understand the fiscal impacts on the project and the city's revenue. The consultant would be funded by the applicant, but city staff will have oversight of the consultant's scope of work and methodology for the report. The report would provide an analysis of city service levels and fiscal conditions on how the redevelopment of the site would impact the city's long-term fiscal condition and its ability to provide services. It would need to submit a development review permit that would be reviewed concurrently with a general plan amendment. It would need to utilize recycled water if it's available to the site. It would need to exceed the parkland dedication as required and it would need to conduct extensive community engagement. And so we are here for this overriding consideration. So this is the beginning of the review of the project and this is towards the community So in April of 2023, planning staff proposed to council a set of guiding principles that would be used by staff in its review of the project and used by city council in its consideration to provide clarity on the, to the developer on the community's desires. And so with this, staff proposed increasing the standard mailing radius of 1,000 feet to 2,500 feet, using social media and anticipating the need for targeted media outreach as well as partnerships with existing community organizations to reach out to difficult-to-reach communities. And based on staff analysis, the predominant languages in the area are Spanish and Vietnamese. So outreach was conducted in all three languages. And we also had two community-based organizations, the Vietnamese-American Roundtable and the Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley. And so based off of these recommendations, city council approved staff's recommendation for the guiding principles process with recommendations. And so as part of that, we were directed to ensure that the community engagement included not just hybrid, was not limited to hybrid meeting surveys and workshops. And so these were incorporated into the scope with the consultant that worked with us on this. And the second, work with the consulting team to complete a summary of the public engagement process and guiding principles document for city council's consideration. No later than summer of 2024, and this is where we are. And then the third recommendation was to publish an informational memorandum with a progress update on the community engagement process. This info memo was released in April of 2024 after the first set of workshops. It provided an update on the progress of the community engagement process, which was the first set of community workshops and a first online survey. And at that time, an application had still not been submitted. And so this shows here a summary of what our community engagement process looked like. We did three sets of workshops. Each workshop was done both in person and a virtual workshop. And an online survey was also done that was released at the time of the workshops. And we provided the materials and provided interpretation in Spanish and Vietnamese for the workshops. And so here we have a summary of the three rounds of workshop with some information on the number of participants in all three workshops and the online survey. And here are some images of the community engagement. So the first image to the left was the first workshop and the second one is the second workshop. And then here on the right, we have an example of one of the activities that was done with the community to obtain feedback. And here we have a summary of participants. The consultant helped us collect some information on participants and this was optional, so this may not reflect all participants, but this is the information that we received from people who are willing to provide this information. And so now I'll go in and summarize the guiding principles. So based off of the feedback we received from the community, they identified five key objectives for this project, so residential, non-residential, open space and amenities, transportation, urban design, and sustainability, green building, and community programs. So for residential, the first guiding principle was density. And so it was to include a mix of density throughout the site, prioritizing low density and mid-density. Higher density developments, particularly for senior and assistive facilities, were also supported and generally. So participants did recognize the need for a mix of densities to address affordability and diversity, but they had concerns about higher density near the existing single-family residences and the strain that it would create on the local transportation infrastructure. They had for tenure considering providing a mix of for-sale and rental units. And the affordable units would also need providing for-sale and rental units. And for affordable housing, exceeding the city's inclusionary housing ordinance of 15%. So over 50% of the participants expressed that onsite affordability should exceed the city's inclusionary housing ordinance with a preference of 20% to 30% onsite affordable units. And participants expressed a desire to include affordable units for a variety of income ranges. And participants expressed the need for affordable units to provide housing for teachers, first-time home buyers, young professionals, frontline workers. And so they said that they should be available for both rent and for sale to promote affordability for all. And then the last one for residential was site design. And they said to locate lower densities adjacent to the existing single-family residences and multifamily residences should be located toward the center of the site and on the corner of Tully Road and South White Road. And for non-residential, participants were supportive of small-scale retail in the future development and expressed a desire for establishments catering to and addressing the needs of local residents. The community identified small retail restaurants, community centers, community gathering spaces, and a mid-sized grocery store as appropriate neighborhood-serving retail. And for traffic impacts, the primary concern with non-residential uses was their impact on traffic. Participants expressed concerns about traffic impacts non-residential uses would create on Tully Road and South White Road. So to minimize these impacts, participants expressed the preference to provide neighborhood-serving retail and retail and commercial, non-commercial that could provide jobs for residences in the area but not create significant traffic impacts. And for open space, first key objective was the plazas. And so the participants expressed that the project should have a plaza similar to Evergreen Village Square. And so given the concerns about exclusivity and access, the central plaza and any other community gathering spaces should be available to the surrounding neighborhood. Participants also said that the project should include a plaza centrally located within the site and then consider additional plazas along the corner of South White and Tully Road. And for open space, they prioritize the inclusion of well-maintained accessible open spaces that focus on natural landscaping. And they expressed that both, that it should include drought tolerant. And then they also suggested that there could be land, open space along the perimeter. And so these would include like running paths or bicycle paths. And for community gathering spaces, they emphasize the need for open space and these could be flexible lawn spaces that could be used for events. And so transportation, there were six community priorities for transportation. So the first was multimodal design. The project should provide a multimodal design to improve accessibility and improve traffic flow. They prioritize bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and connections throughout the site. They also expressed concerns about exclusivity and emphasized the need to provide connections throughout the site and to provide the surrounding neighborhoods access to the site. Neighbors along Flint Avenue requested that connection so the project be limited to bicycles and pedestrians. The next one was connections to Lake Cunningham. So the project should provide connections to the project, an entrance to Lake Cunningham. They emphasize the need for safe connections for bicycles and pedestrians on White Road to encourage the use of the regional park. And for transportation demand management, they prioritize transportation demand management features that could help provide alternative options to reduce impacts. And they, they shared different transportation demand measures that the project should provide. And so the, for example, they stated that the project could provide its own shuttle service and pay for increased bus transit to connect the site nearby amenities. And next we have roadway improvements. So participants expressed the importance of upgrading existing streets, improving current roadway conditions, and including infrastructure in future development that serves the site and its future users and provides adequate access to major routes. Parking, participants expressed concerns about parking, the current resident, for current residents, providing parking that sufficiently serves future commercial and residential development is a priority as an undersupply would negatively impact the existing neighborhood. And the last one was centralized location for transportation. So they requested a transit area mobility hub that would serve the projects as a focal point for transportation alternatives to single-occupant vehicles. So the participants acknowledged that there currently aren't many transit lines that run to the site. So they expressed the need for improved public transit and requested that future stops should be considered near the mobility hub. And so for the, so the guiding principles, so they will be considered as part of the review of the project. The project will still be reviewed for conformance with the city's goals and policies. So it'll be reviewed for conformance with the general plan. Environmental review will occur concurrently during the review of the development permit. And the project will also be coordinated with our development review partners. So two of our overriding considerations are recycled water and parkland dedication. So the project will still be reviewed for those two overriding considerations during the formal review of a development permit. And so there are two key overriding considerations that we will review and consider during the review of the project and that will, that are part of the fiscal impact study. So density and affordable housing. So we will review the project to ensure that it provides housing at a density that would not negatively impact the city's finances on an ongoing basis. Previously, city analysis has suggested that lower density may cost the city more to provide services than it receives in revenues. So the fiscal impact study and the city's priorities will be weighed along with environmental limitations found through the environmental review process. And based on the findings of the impact study, we will use the preferences that are identified in the guiding principles to recommend the project provide housing types and a density range that best meets the priorities of the city and the community-based defined criteria of the guiding principles. And so throughout the guiding principles process, as mentioned, for like affordable housing, the community identified that 20% to 30% would be an appropriate amount of affordable housing onsite. And so that will continue during the review of the development permit. And so the next steps, so the applicant will need to submit an annexation application. The project site is currently within the county. And a pre-zoning application will also need to be submitted to review an annexation application. We do have a general plan amendment on file that was submitted in December of 2022 within council policy changes. They will need to submit a development permit. The development permit will be reviewed concurrently with the general plan amendment on file. Project also needs to submit a tentative map to subdivide. And during the project review, that we will do concurrently, the review of the fiscal impact study, review of the onsite affordable housing, review of commercial, recycled water, parks, environmental review, and weigh the guiding principles. And so through this process, we will continue to community outreach as specified in council policy 6-30. And for the project, we will review it to ensure it provides the overriding benefits in accordance with CEQA. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Thank you for the comprehensive update and congratulations on getting to this stage. I appreciate how much work has gone into community engagement. I know Councilmember Candela does as well. We'll come back to the council after we first hear from the public. Tony, do we have comments?
Hi. I currently have nine cards submitted, so I'm going to call your name. You do not have to come up in the order you're called. First person to the microphone, just begin. Everybody else, take a seat in the first row to wait your turn. I have Dora Padilla, Jonathan Padilla, Jake Wilde, and Trudy to start. So again, that's Dora, Jonathan, Jake, and Trudy.
I'm Judge Dora Padilla, State of California, resident of Evergreen for 40 years. The guiding principles were flawed. It came out in the commission, planning commission meeting that the community outreach was ineffective. The two groups that were targeted were not specific to Evergreen. The target communities were Vietnamese and Spanish-speaking. The black community was not included. The Indian community was not included. The graph indicates that the majority of the residents in the area who participated are 65 over. They're not necessarily social media savvy particularly. A lot of them don't have computers. So the outreach was not as it should be. This is a big project. We need to have better community involvement. We had some, but not to the level that we should have for this kind of a project. My recommendation to the committee is send it back to the planning commission and have them try again. I was there at the meeting. There was great debate amongst the commissioners. They weren't even sure on what they were voting on, if you look at the transcripts. It was not a unanimous vote. There were a lot of concerns and I share those concerns. If there's going to be a development, we need to have proper community engagement. And while we had some, it was nowhere near what it should be for this type of program, for this type of project. I urge you to not vote on this, not accept this yet, consider it further, and send it back to the planning commission and let them try again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dear Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Jonathan Padilla. I'm a lifelong D8 resident. I've been active in my community and earnestly believe that creative and common sense solutions are going to be the cornerstone of solving homelessness, housing, and economic development. That being said, this development represents perhaps the most substantive change to the character of Evergreen over the last 40 years. It goes against dozens of years of city policy with the retired East Hills Development Plan. With a likely accretive development from both Reed Hillview and East Ridge, this will have dramatic impacts on quality of life, traffic, and other localized resources. During this process, I've attended every workshop, last month's planning commission meeting, and I personally canvassed over 300 houses directly adjacent to Pleasant Hills Golf Course. Neighbors are Neighbors are very, very concerned and want their voice heard. Many of the homes I've personally canvassed and neighbors I've spoken to, many whom I've known for dozens of years, I was the first person who contacted them outside of the postcards from the city. We had very minimal communication from both the Latino Coalition and the Vietnamese Round Table. And I want to state for the record, I questioned the efficacy of those groups on this topic of public policy and the resource the city committed to them because very few people, a handful, had ever heard from them. As, uh, my mother just said, and you can see where I get it from her, um, the irony here is planning is a disaster. I mean, I had, the head of the planning commission was yelling at people, it was, I mean, the planning director had to step in. This definitely needs more review. I just want to state for the record that I appreciate the work by staff and commission and the council, but this is something that definitely needs the attention from all aspects of the city if we want to have the right public policy outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Rigo Gallardo and Rupert or Robert Reese. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Trudy Ellerbeck, and I live in the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood, which is just to the north of the site. Uh, first of all, I want to say that I will welcome the new neighbors that we will potentially have in our neighborhood on potentially, hopefully, a creative and imaginative campus that affords lots of open space that's available to the public, tree canopy, small-scale retail. I think personally, I thought the community engagement was well thought out. I appreciate the efforts of the planning department. I feel a little bit differently than the previous speakers about how well that went. And again, um, very briefly, I just hope that you support those community guidelines here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jake Wild, and I'm the, uh, manager of development projects at Catalyze SV. Uh, and I want to start off by thanking the city staff, uh, for the guiding principles process. Having attended a couple of the meetings, I can say that I think they were fairly well put together and engaging as far as things go. But now that we are maybe wrapping up the guiding principles process tonight, uh, I want to encourage the city to take a real critical look at the project details the developer has already put forth for the site. Uh, 1,700 units on 113 acres. When our members discussed how Pleasant Hills could bring the most benefit to the city, one of their top goals for the site was high-density housing that maximizes public open space. 1,700 units on 113 acres, it's not very high density. Uh, it looks like a development straight out of the last century. It does not look like a development that a city battling a housing crisis and climate crisis would want to build. We need to be building and planning for the future. As is, this project is just more of the status quo that will only add to the mounting negative impacts from decades of urban sprawl. Pleasant Hills presents a unique opportunity. Please make sure that we use this site and land wisely in a way that can bring the greatest benefit to the most people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd also like to call down Alex Shore and Michael Gabler.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Mayhem, City Council. My name is, uh, Rigo Alberto Gallardo. I'm a field rep for the Norwood Carpenters here in San Jose. Uh, today I'm here to speak on the opportu, I'm here to address the proposed Pleasant Hills development by Terriscape Ventures, a project that has the potential to be a great project and benefit the east side of San Jose if the right choices are made. This development can, can truly serve the community if Terriscape Ventures commits a firm commitment to hiring a responsible contractor that implements strong area labor standards. One of the key standards should be hiring through accredited apprenticeship program, which are proven escalators to the middle class. These programs not only train workers, but given, give them the opportunity to earn a livable wage, ensuring that people who build Pleasant Hills should, could potentially afford to live in, in there themselves. In addition, it is essential that we enforce standards that guarantee the safety and well-being of every worker. Physically and financially, no worker should be harmed, short-changed, or placed in an unsafe condition on this project. Strong labor standards ensure that workers are treated fairly, which in turn supports the long-term success of the entire development. By committing to a responsible contractor and implying these labor standards, Terriscape Ventures has the opportunity to strengthen the community, create economic opportunities, and set a positive precedent for the future development in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Council and Mayor. My name is Robert Reese. I chair the Land Use Committee of the District Eight Community Roundtable. My comments tonight are my own. I approached the council with a lot of gratitude for innovation, going back to 2022, when council members Foley, Jimenez, Davis, and Matt was a council member, for building into the, uh, update to the transportation analysis by point one, the robust community engagement. I also want to thank this council this past year ago for building into, uh, the visioning process. The mayor and council member Candelas have worked very closely together, which is very much appreciated. As you approach the function of the guiding principles, I would like you to have confidence that the process worked as it was intended, and it is, um, a first step in what will be a process of the analysis, learning about the site together. My understanding is that, um, the community engagement is far from being over and that the next step will be for a project description to be, um, determined, which will kick off the environmental review. I think there will be at least two additional community meetings, maybe three. Policy 630 allows for that, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for discussion. Some of the things that I would like you to be aware of, particularly with the site that I don't think were addressed in the guiding principles, is that it is not a transit-oriented site by your definition as to a transit-oriented site. It's a site which has immodical VMT, which is in a non-growth area. In particular to the site, um, Tully Road is essentially a county expressway with limited access. The frontage along White Road, um, is wetlands. There's hydrology issues. The nature of the physical aspects of the site caused the development to go into the neighborhoods more than you would really have for most develop-
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Melissa Gott Lopez.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Michael Gabler. I'm, uh, a resident of the east side of San Jose since 1979. I'm the president of the Norwood Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood is right adjacent to the golf course. A few short weeks ago, I stood before this council to accept the commendation. Again, thank you. At that, uh, in my comments to the council that day, I mentioned that I have a main mantra, everything's a trade-off. So, um, when I, when I said that, I saw everybody's head kind of, yeah, everything's a trade-off. So in considering the trade-offs on this project, um, each of you will be asked to consider topics such as loading up of density. If density came with no trade-offs, I don't think anybody in this room would go, done deal. But that's not the case. There's always trade-offs. We know we need the homes. I'm not going to go into a whole list of trade-offs because you guys will have to deal with them separately. That's not the topic for tonight, tonight, is to look at those guiding principles. And I look at these and I go, you guys laid out a course, the planning, the, uh, the planning commission executed on those. Thank you. Thank you. It's been mentioned that the development that's been put forth by the developer is too, too low houses. Well, based on my rudimentary calculations, it's more than three times the density of the local community around there. Yeah, maybe that's too little, maybe it's too, too, um, too much. Some people would say, we don't want anything. Some people say, we want lots. It's a trade-off. All right. I know that tonight's issue is only about the guiding principles as guided by the committee and that the city council is going to have to grapple with how to use these guiding principles. Please figure out a way, way to make the voices of the committee not just be a checkbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Melissa, and I am a proud resident of the San Jose East Side. I'd like to thank the entire council and the mayor for this unique opportunity, for allowing the community to work with the city and the developers on the future of the Pleasant Hills Golf Course. I personally attended several of the forums, and I saw they were collaborative, transparent, and informative. And I believe that the guiding principles and the process reflect the feedback provided by the community through both the meetings and the surveys. The ask tonight is to accept the guiding principles and to allow this process to continue to move forward. My hope is that this engagement process becomes the new standard for future developments, specifically benefiting the east San Jose where voices of our residents have historically been, been absent. This process can be a pilot for future developments, and I hope to see it through to its completion. I'd also like to recognize and thank Mayor Mayhem, council members Candelas, Ortiz, Foley, and Jimenez for the memo to accept the guiding principles and recommend seeking further fiscal analysis and options to ensure a well-thought-out and sustainable development for our community. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. Want to support some of the comments my colleague Jake made. We had our members weigh in on this project, and Catalyze SV cares about two things a great deal, inclusive collaborative community engagement and a community where everyone can afford to live that's sustainable and vibrant. And on the community engagement front, I, I've probably been to about 500 community meetings, and this community meeting, I went to the second workshop in person, was one of the most interactive and engaging workshops I've ever seen. So kudos to the consultant, to staff for leading that workshop, which I think was encapsulated in the principles. The challenge is that there are a lot of folks who can't come to a community meeting on a Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, and a lot of the folks who hopefully were building development for couldn't be there because they're not yet in our community, or they're crowded too much in one home in our community. We need those voices too, and we need to build for those folks. I'm so glad that Michelle Flores on staff brought up the issue of density and the fiscal study that the council members and the mayor put forward in your memo. Catalyze SV is very supportive of that analysis. We think it will show that the low-density focus on single-family homes and townhomes is extremely insufficient for the future of our city, for solving this crisis. We have got to build more housing, and if we keep doing the same thing over and over, we will just dig ourselves deeper and deeper and deeper into this crisis. So thank you for listening to our members, um, some of whom wrote to you this week to share their views on how we create inclusive collaborative communities. This wonderful community engagement process is a start, but what really matters is what the developer is already proposing. So we hope you will push them to do a better project, to start over and get a better proj-
Back to council.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Thank you to everyone who came out to speak this evening. I appreciate you taking the time to be here on a, uh, Tuesday evening. Let me turn to colleagues, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Candelas.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to begin my comments, uh, by expressing a heartfelt note of appreciation and thanks to all of the residents, uh, from my district as well as neighboring districts and the stakeholders, um, who came out to participate in the community process time and again, and who's also here this evening. And while it was not a perfect process, the reality is, community outreach rarely is. But I, I do disagree with the notion that the process was flawed. In addition to the 2,500-foot radius, or nearly 4,100 homes, I went door-to-door in the adjacent neighborhoods, knocking on thousands of doors, uh, dropping off literature and telling folks about this to ensure that, uh, residents in my district and the folks who would be directly affected by this had an opportunity to weigh in. I attended every single meeting, both the in-person and the same meeting that happened in Zoom. Uh, this process provided community members, and yes, if you couldn't make an in-person at seven o'clock, we had options to do it in Zoom, uh, an opportunity of what they wanted to see at the site of the former golf course. This is atypical. Usually, the city or the applicant, uh, doesn't go out to the community until a project application has been submitted. And so I do want to talk about the innovative community engagement model that proactively got input from the residents before a project was even conceived. This allowed the public a voice from the start, an opportunity to genuinely engage in an organized and systemic fashion, and I believe this could be a template for our city. Today, we have an opportunity as a council to adopt community guiding principles, not the applicant, not our consultant, not our planning department, but our communities. I'm excited to keep this conversation going, and by no means is this the end of the process. And in fact, we still have a long way to go. Um, and I hope that as a council, uh, we can continue to innovate and invest in engaging, but more importantly, empowering our residents. Um, and, and by no means i- is, is this the end of the community outreach process. I think it's a strong foundation for future conversations and input. You know, I, I, thank you, staff, for your, for your help and the process throughout the, the way. And I, I also want to thank the mayor and, and my colleagues in the Brown Act who helped put together a thoughtful memo that ensures that we as a city have a thorough understanding of the traffic, fiscal impact, as well as the costs and trade-offs, as mentioned earlier, that would ultimately allow us to, uh, protect the quality of life for, for, for not just my neighbors, but all residents here in our city. And so, uh, with that, I'll, I'll move the memorandum by the mayor, councilmember Ortiz, councilmember Foley, councilmember Jimenez, and myself.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate you attending all those meetings and being so engaged along the process. I think it, it matters a whole lot, and we have invested more in this project in front-loading community engagement. Not that we're done. There are many more community meetings to go and a lot of process left, but I think it was smart of the council to, uh, push to front-load a lot of community engagement and distill some of the themes early so that the council would have that transparency early in the process. Um, moving over to councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, I just want to thank staff for their diligent, uh, work and for keeping my office up to date on this process as it's moved forward. I also want to share a very heartfelt thank you to our residents in both District Five and District Eight. Um, I see, you know, Trudy Ellerbeck from the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, Melissa Gott Lopez, of course, president of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School District, uh, of course, residents from Norwood Neighborhood Association and many others. And, and we're just really appreciative of all of you coming out to the town halls, offering your valuable comments, and helping shape the guiding principles in which we're going to be voting on today. I'm deeply grateful for your time and commitment, and especially want to uplift the voices of our, our brothers and sisters in the labor movement. Of course, it's very important that as we create jobs in the city of San Jose, they, they are family-sustaining jobs. But th- this process wouldn't have been possible without all of your voices. Your feedback is at the core of what has created these guiding principles, which will serve as a blueprint for the future of this development. You've shared your concerns, your hopes, your priorities of what should happen in your very own backyard. And that input should be reflected in every decision we make moving forward on this project. The guiding principles reflected in the community's collective vision, and your ideas helped ensure this project benefits not just a few, but really the entire community, current residents and future residents alike. I, I want to give a special thanks to the community-based organization partners, um, the Latino Coalition of Silicon Valley, and the Vietnamese-American Roundtable. I truly believe these organizations went above and beyond in helping us reach out to our communities and really met them where they were at to keep them informed of the project. They distributed multilingual flyers, conducted door-to-door outreach, and used their special media platforms to keep everyone informed. But though I'm also, you know, always open to feedback, and, you know, I appreciate people saying that, uh, some individuals weren't, uh, contacted, so I always take that into consideration. Not only that, but these groups were present at all three workshops, assisting in ensuring that a broad range of voices were heard and represented throughout the process. Um, this process has truly been a community-driven effort, and I want to thank everyone who showed up here, both for and against the project, for your commitment and dedication to your neighborhoods. I look forward to continuing this journey with our residents, with our community members, with our workforce partners, as we bring these guiding principles to life. And your ongoing involvement is crucial to the success of this project. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the vote.
Thanks, councilmember. Vice Mayor Kamai. Vice Mayor Kama.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of you coming out here and participating, and also participating in the many meetings that my colleagues have had. I have not been as close to this, but I think that it's a wonderful process. And certainly, I echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues that this is not the end of the process. This is just the beginning, and it serves as a good guide. And that's what it is. It's a guide. I wanted to ask the staff, in terms of it being binding, is it binding to any future proposals or development or anything like that?
So the principles will be used and weighed as part of the development permit, but what would be binding are those overriding considerations. So this will be a part of it. This is the community outreach, similar to how we do it in a standard development permit. It will be used during the development review permit, and it will be weighed against city priorities.
Right. But it would be part of the trade-offs, right, that would be taken into account? I think this is great. As the mayor said, it really front-loads a lot of the community engagement. It's so unusual that you have one hundred and fifteen acres in the city of San Jose to be able to do something really beautiful. I agree with councilmember Ortiz that this serves as a blueprint, and having it being adaptive as well, because as you move along, you're going to learn, right? So having the ability to adapt to what you learn along the way is important. So I look forward to supporting my colleagues and seeing something really wonderful come out of that.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. And just quickly, I wanted to make a few comments. I remember the pain when we were going through creating these guiding principles and thinking it through the last time we had this conversation, how tough that was. But now that we've done it and it's coming back, I'm actually pretty amazed that it seems to have worked somewhat, that we actually have guiding principles that make sense. Trying to develop an area that in some theory, in theory, has potential but wasn't part of the city's original development plan and wasn't earmarked as a site for this use is challenging, and we have to have a lot of, put a lot of thought into how we do that right. And so I do want to just thank my colleagues for the memo that came out, because making sure that fiscal analysis is part of this will be very important to me. If we're going to develop particularly on a site that doesn't, that wasn't supposed to be developed this way, at least originally in the general plan, we should certainly make sure it's not going to be a hit to our fiscal stability as a city and cost us money. We also need to make sure we're going to get enough benefits out of it, including housing that's part of the general principles. But we know that there's a certain density required in order to actually be fiscally positive for the city rather than negative for the city. The number used to be about fifty-five. I don't know what it is currently. Maybe it's sixty or so now. Whatever that is, we should be sure that what we're doing is not going to be costly to us and cause us to have to spend even more on resources than we're bringing in. So I just want to make, just elevate that part of the motion because I think it's important as we move forward.
Yeah, thanks, councilmember. Appreciate you highlighting that. I mean, look, I think the key word there, as Michael pointed out, is trade-offs. And we should just be very explicit about this, and I don't think it's a mystery to any of us who have followed this project or frankly, any of the development in the city. Different parts of the city can sustain different densities based on infrastructure, in particular, how people move around. This is not well-served by transit, and yet there are fiscal considerations. And I think what the group memos trying to do is say, okay, we have guiding principles that are the themes of what the community has said matter to the existing community there. That's a really important input. It's not the final say on what the community cares about. There'll be ongoing community engagement, but we had, by my count, over six hundred unique points of participation, if not over six hundred unique people who participated across these different opportunities. And there'll be more community engagement, but we have some themes, and those themes are very sensible. They make sense. They're the things I've heard when I've knocked on doors in these neighborhoods. But we also have to recognize there are other interests the city has, as councilmember Cohen is pointing to, and that's fiscal stability and our ability to provide services. And so what the group memo points to is the fact that we need the council to be empowered with good information about what levers we have for addressing fiscal impacts. One lever's density, but there's a trade-off. More density means more traffic congestion. There's not a lot of transit out there. So higher residential density may not be the best lever to pull to address fiscal impacts. There's another lever, which is the mix of land use. Should it be primarily residential, or should we try to get more job, employment uses or other economic uses, whether it's retail or medical office or what, that's going to help generate additional tax base without consuming as many services? And then there's another potential lever, which is a special assessment district, which we're asking the city attorney, and city manager and city attorney to look into. So I think we have options. There's no perfect project. It's all trade-offs. This will not have the kind of density that a project next to a BART station could support, bottom line. But it also can't be so low-density that we can't afford to provide basic emergency response. And so that's going to be the challenge that we openly collaboratively have to explore as we figure out which of these levers we can pull, as we guide a development that, I should also note, has to be financially viable as something that people want to build, which is another consideration, because it could be the perfect project on paper and still not be fiscally or financially viable, and then we get nothing. So there are a lot of things to balance. We should just be open about that. We're not going to make anybody perfectly, or everybody perfectly happy, but this is a great starting place, and I think it's very appropriate, as I started with, and to the point councilmember Candalis, and I think Ortiz was making, it's appropriate that we started by getting down the community's guiding principles first, as we now look at other considerations like fiscal impacts, infrastructure needs, and the viability of a development. So just wanted to make sure we're taking into account the broader picture, but I'm glad that we have some guiding principles, and I think it's a really strong foundation. All right. Thank you all for the comments, all the work staff has done. Thank you all for sticking around relatively late this evening. Tony, I think we're ready to vote.
I did it to you again, Davis. Sorry, you weren't there. Motion passes unanimously with all present.
Okay. Great. Thank you all very much. We are on to Open Forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any cards for Open Forum?
James Campbell.
Do we have a James Campbell who would like to speak?
I think he left.
He may have left. I don't see anyone coming down. Did we have any other speaker cards?
That was the only card.
All right. Thank you all. We're adjourned.